So there's, how many chapters are there?
That's the statute. I believe it is due to the law of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chuck Warfield. Alice Rodewick.
There's Chuck.
There's Chuck. Cheryl Johnson.
Present.
Mike Wins' absent and Rick Phillips.
I'm here.
I got you.
At this time we'll have any opening remarks? Does anyone have any opening remarks? Moving forward, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
At this time, we will take public comment related to the items on the agenda below. In consideration of others who may also wish to provide public comment, please avoid repetition and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
Hold on. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, moving forward, items for discussion, possible action of the Caliente Planning Commission. Item A, approve or deny meeting minutes from October 20th, '21 and November 17th, 2021.
While making motion, will you approve October 20th?
I'll second the motion. Are we going to do these two separately?
He said we can do them together.
Oh, okay. Did anyone have anything on the November 17th? Any changes?
I'm here, in case I need to.
While making motion, will you approve October 20th and November 17th?
I'll second that motion.
At this time, we'll make a motion to, or we've made a motion and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3B, discuss solutions for abandoned unregistered vehicles on city-owned properties and streets.
So I provided some statutes. I really don't know if there's anything that the city should do more other than if there have been abandoned vehicles and just let the Lynn County Sheriff's Office know. The NRS 487 is pretty, um, pretty well established, as you can see. It allows law enforcement to remove any vehicle that they reasonably believe is on public property, to remove that vehicle. It also allows anyone, any private landowner who has reasonably that vehicle, an abandoned vehicle on their property to remove it by tow. There's also an NRS citing that it's unlawful to abandon a vehicle on a public roadway, so they could actually cite them for it, take them criminally charged and they'd have to pay a fine and whatever else. So, um, I don't know if there's anything more you guys want to do, but I did provide those statutes for you guys to look at and take a look. If you have any questions.
So it's basically the Sheriff's Department's responsibility.
They have, they have the authority to remove abandoned vehicles on the roadway.
Do we have a policy in place for the city of Caliente, whether it's employees or whatever, to contact the Sheriff's Office? Or is it just private citizens complaining to the Sheriff's Office?
Because right now, it's private citizens complaining to the Sheriff's Office. There's no, yeah, there's nothing the city has in place right now that I know of off the top of my head.
So are abandoned vehicles also unregistered vehicles? Are they the same?
Not necessarily, right? So, um, someone might have just purchased a vehicle, right?
Right.
So there, there's another statute in there under 487 that talks about when a vehicle is abandoned. There's a definition of abandoned vehicle. Here it is, it's 487-210. It says abandoned vehicle means a vehicle, if the vehicle is discovered upon public lands that the owner has discarded, B, if the vehicle is discovered upon public or private property other than public lands that the owner has discarded, or which has not been reclaimed by the registered owner or a person having a security interest in the vehicle within 15 days after notification pursuant to NRS 487-250. So what happens when law enforcement discovers that there's an abandoned vehicle, they'll place that sticker on there. And if it's been there for, and they'll run the VIN number, they'll find the last known address, they'll probably notify them. If it's not been reclaimed, then it's considered abandoned.
And when it becomes that way, whose responsibility is it? If they find it abandoned, whose responsibility is to move it?
So it's, it's the owner's responsibility, right? But what, what they're saying is 487-21, 281 allows law enforcement to cite that individual if they fail to remove their vehicle from the roadway. And so that's what 487-281 is. It's a criminal statute that says you can cite that individual if they fail to come get their vehicle off of the public roadway.
So you can park an unlicensed vehicle on a street forever. If you find a sticker on it, you can call the Sheriff's Department, say, no, I know it's there, it's not abandoned, and it can stay there indefinitely.
So there is another statute for registration of vehicles, that a vehicle has to be registered within so many days after purchasing it. And if they fail to register it, then, um, then it becomes a different citation. And they can continue to cite them under that statute until they register their vehicle.
I think the vehicles we're making reference to have been there for a number of years.
Yeah, they would be.
Unmoved, unlicensed.
Yeah, those would technically be abandoned is my, what my opinion would be.
Okay, so basically, what we had to do is let the Sheriff's Department know so they can go buy it.
Yeah, that's.
Basically put a sticker on it, give them time to figure out what they're going to do, and then go buy in another two or three weeks and see if it's, anything's changed. Is that right?
Two weeks a day, and if it's not moved, if they've not moved it off the public roadway, and then the Sheriff's Office can move it for them, tow it, will probably, likely will tow it for them. And then they have the option of citing that individual as well for failure to remove that vehicle off of public roadway.
Would that be to an impound yard type thing? And then it'd have, if the person wanted it, they'd have to pay a fee to get it removed?
That's usually how it works, yep.
Where in the NRS does it define abandoned?
It's 487.
Does each one of those statutes have its own definition of abandoned?
487-210, that's where they define abandoned vehicle. And that's what I just read a minute ago.
So the Sheriff's Office, have it a ban, uh, a place to?
They usually, they usually take it, again, it just depends on where they're, so it happens all the time in criminal cases, like if someone's pulled over, then they're arrested, then a tow yard will come get it and put it in their tow yard. So if it's down in Alamo, then it's usually, um, pro towing, I think, the pro towing yard. If it's here around Caliente, it goes to Lynn's Tow Yard. I think there's another place up in Pioch, the A and B Sinclair up there. They have a, I think they have a tow yard up there. Just depends on what the closest tow yard is.
Wasn't familiar with it.
At this point, I think, I don't know that there's any action that we need to do unless you guys want to put together a list of vehicles that we think we might want to contact the Sheriff's Department with.
I think it's up to private individuals to make that choice. I don't think that's our job.
I think it was more so when we actually had our own Sheriff's Department, it was easier to make all those things happen when we had our own Caliente Police Department. So, you know, things are adjusted, and this might not have been rewritten or anything else. It just leaves it up to the Sheriff's Department, okay.
So at this point, maybe we bring it back up if we need to?
Yeah.
If for some reason the Sheriff's Department isn't doing it.
Yeah, and we could do a campaign of something like putting something in, in the bills to say if you've noticed any vehicles you feel are abandoned, please call the non-emergency line for the Lynn County Sheriff's Office and advise them that you think there's an abandoned vehicle on the roadway and ask them to take care of it, or something along those lines.
And I do know that people have called before about unregistered vehicles on a street, and the people went and registered the vehicles.
So, and, and the non-emergency number is 962-5151 or 8080. I think both of them work.
We've got a month before the next one comes up. So I don't know if we want to put a reminder in the next meeting to write that.
Yeah, we could just, we could just put it on the next meeting just so we're reminded that we want to put them in next month's bills, that's fine. I think that's a good idea.
I think if a few of them get notified by the Sheriff's Office, the rumor will go around pretty fast.
Also true.
So it doesn't have to necessarily be a major issue to the average homeowner.
Yeah, yeah, once people know that Sheriff's Office is being called, or if they see it themselves, they're like, oh man, I should move my car.
So if it's parked in front of your yard, that is a city street?
Yeah, and again, the vehicle has to be abandoned, right? And so that's the, that's the important part. It just means, so it has to be discarded. So, yeah, so if it's, if it's on a public street.
I think it could be misused if we make it too much available to the public. Somebody's parking there, even though they're using it weekly or something that the lot owner gets in a negative mindset. I'm sure the Sheriff has, Sheriff's Department has other things to do other than, um, look after cars that may irritate people. But I think there's a number of cars that are pretty obvious, haven't been moved for years.
Exactly.
And that's what needs to be done. So I think that should be left up to the individual, a individual or concerned individuals to pursue those instead of start opening it up to. It's a way of getting back at people that you may not see eye to eye on. It's a, it's kind of a nasty thing.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want citizens to get into it.
I don't think the public should be notified of how they can abuse things.
Okay, so we're talking against the campaign and the utility bill.
Yeah, you know, it, it can be abused very quickly.
Yeah, I agree.
And escalate. And, um, I think that's just a stick it to somebody that not, shouldn't be pointed out.
So possibly, just out of curiosity, since they have seen these abandoned vehicles, okay? They could technically call and say, look, there's an abandoned vehicle here.
Yeah, what, what you could do is you could say.
As an, as a citizen, just not as a commission.
And the Sheriff's Department will recognize, um, I would think from the person making that suggestion or recommendation, that it's serious and not, and the Sheriff's Department knows what vehicle's been sitting anyway. If you could just say, well, let the Sheriff's Department do it, they would know exactly where to go. So let the pros and responsible people do that. Yeah, that's my opinion.
Does any, anyone else have any other solutions to discuss?
No, I think it pretty well says they're supposed to take care of it. That's where we don't need to get involved.
I think it's a nice solution for our planning board to.
Yes.
I love your solution.
At this point, we'll take items for discussion only for the building inspector's report. That would be you, Ken.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to report. The, uh, many street apartments, I stopped calling them Caliente apartments because they're, the sale is in progress, being completed. So now they're going to be the many street apartments. They have notified me that they want a letter from the, given them a building permit. They don't want the building permit yet. They want to know how much it's going to cost, and they have to supply a letter to state housing division saying it is ready to go for a permit. My problem is that we have a plan from them. It's dated almost two years ago. So I have requested from them a currently dated plan, and the corrections that have been made over there to get FEMA approval need to be on that plan. So 20 years from now, somebody in this, sitting in this chair or close to it don't have to do it all over again. So they assured me today that they will have the, the plan within a week. It brings everything up to date. So when that happens, I'll issue them a letter saying, "Yeah, it can be permitted." And then their plan is that they'll start working on it in about mid-January. Seems like a lot happening in mid-January.
Time to start things happening, but I guess it is.
But with this sale, will they continue to be, um, the low-income housing? Or is it going to be changed into just a regular apartment, a certain amount of rent? Just curious.
That's a really good question, and I don't have a really good answer. I have asked them that question. How are they going to keep? Technically, they're low-cost housing apartments. They are classed as that. So if anybody needs to move in there that is classified in that category, then they're going to be, be up to the owner of the apartments, how they handle that. I haven't got an answer out of them yet. I think if we can't get an answer out of them, and how they're going to do it, my opinion is, and Franklin can correct me if I'm wrong, that this body needs to solidify what those apartments are for. Whether they are going to be low-cost family housing or just exactly what the situation's going to be.
Does it affect the permitting process at all?
Sorry?
Does it affect the permitting process at all, what, what the designation is? Just curious.
No, it doesn't affect anything except what the owner wants to do with them. And, well, there's a lot of language in, as Franklin can verify, there's a lot of language in the FEMA and Nevada Housing Division that supposedly clarify that, but you've got to be smarter than I am to interpret it because it's just wide open to interpretation.
Do they include any handicapped housing units?
They, there are handicap builder rooms, apartments in each one of the buildings. That's part of what they've corrected, to bring it up to what FEMA declassified as a, a living low-cost housing unit.
So what is the percentage of apartments to, to low, for handicapped?
There are 15 apartments in each building. So that's one of them is classified as handicapped in each building. One, and that meets the current requirement.
Is there anything else?
Not unless somebody's got some questions. I've had a couple of people contact me, back to the other project, had a couple of people contact me about abandoned cars or from their neighbor that are sitting out on the street with no engines in them and have been parked there for a month, two months, three months. But they're on a public right-of-way, so that falls under what our other discussion was.
Is the unit, is the marijuana grow down Rainbow Canyon? Is that operational at this time?
It's in the process of being completed. They never completed all their requirements for the state requirements and the landlord, adjacent landlord, property owner that they bought from. They never completed all the highway access that was on the, uh, specified for their use. They're doing that right now. They should have that completed by the end of January as well. And it sounds like they're going to go ahead and start making provision marijuana. The original plan was that they were going to use grow marijuana in that existing building. But now that I've been approached for greenhouse operation, so, tell them, give me some plans.
And how's our other one doing? And how are we doing with it for the city?
Uh, they're keeping their payments up. When they make a sale, we get notification from the state and from them. And they're, they're keeping their payments up.
And weren't they going to grow some more too? I mean, aren't they going to build some more greenhouses?
They, I've, I have plans, and I have reviewed plans for another five greenhouses. I'm sorry, 15 greenhouses, including a couple of additional buildings where they'll process. But right now, they're, they've got them on hold pending funding. They're going, I keep saying January is the day, but that's when they told me they were going to start it. We'll see what happens in January.
About the business center, is that?
The what?
The.
Industrial Park.
Industrial Park, sorry.
We had a meeting with them this morning for two hours with the current owner. We're still waiting on plans from him. He was supposed to bring them today, and he says he'll bring them next week. But he's also made a statement in that meeting that, uh, again, we're talking January, that he wants to have the building slab poured by the end of January. But I told him, "I need a plan before he can even pour any concrete. We have to see what it is."
So is the city work done out there now that they've got their part of it done?
The city has completed their portion of the rating that's been done out there.
And that's all they had to do?
But part of the city's obligation is to pay for a portion of three-phase power to the industrial park. That's what the two-hour meeting was this morning with the owner and the mayor, Public Works, myself, and Lincoln County Power. So we'll see what happens in another week when they're supposed to have these more plans. That's all I've got, and you got, unless you guys get some more questions.
Great, at this time, we will take public comment for items related to any matters concerning the city of Caliente. In consideration of others who may also wish to provide public comment, please avoid repetition and limit your comments to no more than three minutes.
I really like the idea that Paul Long, I mean Patty Long donated the sleigh and reindeer for the holiday season. That's really nice that they did that. And I'm looking forward to the lighting of the center place. It looks like it's going to be really pretty with all the trees and different things they have planted there.
They're out there right now as we speak, doing it.
Yeah.
We also did put out the notice, I don't know if, if you saw your power bills yet.
I haven't looked at mine yet.
There was a notice that went out with them, thanking everyone for participating in the clearing of their land. Just a thank you for those who did do it. And the, the community appreciated it. So at this time, let's schedule the date and review the agenda topics for the next meeting.
Okay, it'll be the 15th. I love it when it's on the first and the 15th, I don't even have to look.
Okay, well, you think Franklin will have anything on the 15th about the ordinance 138, where we meet and come back?
Send out, email to everyone, see when they.
Yeah, I got the email.
So we just need to figure out when to meet with that and figure out what our discussions go from there, I guess. But, yeah, we can put that on, we can put a reminder.
You can always delete it if we're, we don't have anything for it, you know, for that meeting. Have we ever solved the motor, uh, places, you know, portable eating places and coffee shop? Have we ever come, come up with our ordinance on that?
Uh, we have an, we have a mobile food ordinance. We did that last.
Did we ever finish that?
Yeah, we finished that last year. We charge them for utilities when they hook up to ours.
And along that line, I have had an inquiry from a new property owner in the city.
I'm sorry, well, I guess we're not really in discussion phase about this. We're just, we're just trying to schedule things for next meeting.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm headed, is that we need to complete whatever we're going to do with that works because now I have a guy inquiring about putting those vendors on private property right there across from the Dollar Store. So I told him he had to come in and fill out a conditional use permit, and he said he was going to do that. So we have private property owners now planning on looking into that. So we need to kind of speed that process up.
Okay, so 138 and the mobile vendor?
It's done, I mean, the mobile food vendor is.
It's done, I don't know that it's the planning commission's purview to determine the rate that they're charged, so. You might keep that in mind for tomorrow night. All right, then, if there's no further, uh, comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, sir.
I'll see you tomorrow night. Me too.
With bells on and a hat.
It depends.